All right, and I will. Let's see, call the meeting order here. All right, here we go. Welcome to the original, I'm sorry, welcome to the regular monthly meeting of the Board of Commissioners held for the purpose of transacting the general business of the township. Today's date is May 12, 2021. Due to social instructions for accessing the meeting and for submitting public comment, we are made available on the township's website in advance of the meeting. There is, there is about four lines missing from the type here, so that doesn't make any sense, but you can make up whatever, whatever you want.
Mine has it.
Blah, blah, blah. I don't know, yeah, okay, anyway, yeah, no, mine, mine, it just, it just, the printer didn't work or something, I don't know, anyway, sorry about that. Okay, please stand and join the Board of Commissioners in a moment of silent reflection honoring the servicemen and women who place themselves in harm's way in order to preserve, help preserve our safety at home and overseas. Please stand and join the Board of Commissioners in a moment of silent reflection honoring the servicemen and women who place themselves in harm's way in order to help preserve our safety at home and overseas. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands.
Stands.
One nation, under God.
Indivisible.
With liberty and justice for all.
Okay. I'd like to entertain a motion dispensing with a reading of the minutes of the previous meeting as written and recorded in the official minute book of the township.
They moved.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and you oppose, say nay. Okay, please record unanimously vote. Okay, all of our board members are here, and Andy Fremeth is representing our solicitor. And let's see, make some announcements. I'd like to announce that the Board of Commissioners conducted a special executive session meeting on May 10th, 2021, as part of the regularly scheduled workshop meeting to discuss one personal matter and two matters of litigation. Next, due to limitations on the size of indoor public gatherings, all regular and special meetings of the Board of Commissioners and Township Advisory Boards will continue to occur virtually using the Zoom video conferencing platform until further notice. Meeting details and instructions on how to access meetings can be found on the township website, www.springfieldmonco.org, in advance of each meeting. Okay, last month, the Board announced the representatives of 380 Hawes LP, owners of the property located at 380-42 Hawes Lane, were invited to meet with the Springfield Township Planning Commission at their May 4th, 2021 meeting. However, undercover letter of April 16th, 2021, Council for 380 Hawes LP indicated that they required additional time to prepare for such a meeting and requested the opportunity to meet with the Springfield Township Planning Commission on Tuesday, June 1, 2020. Instead, the meeting on June 1 will begin at 7:00 PM and will include a presentation regarding the proposed construction of between 36 and 41 townhomes in place of any other use that may otherwise be permitted in the institutional zoning district. In addition to providing a mechanism for the owners of the property to share the details of their plans with the community, the meeting will provide an opportunity to solicit feedback from the local planning commission as well as any interested community members. So that's that, and now I am going to turn the gavel over to our Vice President Eddie Graham, who is going to make, he is going to introduce a video presentation. He is the, he's the head of the Cheltenham branch of the NAACP, and so with no further ado, I give you Eddie Graham.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you for that introduction. I just wanted to give a short introduction to the film, that short film that you're about to see that was created by the Cheltenham Area Branch NAACP Youth Leadership Committee. And it was based, based on that racism is entrenched in American history and embedded in today's social, economic, and political systems. The death of George Floyd and Richard Brooks and Breonna Taylor have ignited demands for racial justice and prompted deeper reflections on white privilege across the nation. Schools as institutions that typically reflect the social structure of the communities that they serve are not exempt from these nationwide demands. The members of the Cheltenham Branch NAACP Youth Leadership Committee, inspired by deep conversation about racial equity rooted in the school system, gathered statistics and stories and identified several concerning trends in academics, discipline, and staff biases. This is the cause for the short film that you will be viewing shortly. This file, and I just wanted to let you know that the entire film, from the background music to the statistical information given in the video, was entirely created by the NYLC. We want you to watch, and then we are inviting the general public to join us in a conversation at our Zoom Town Hall on May the 19th at 7:00 PM. Information on registering for the Zoom meeting can be found on the Cheltenham Area Branch NAACP website, or you can email me, Eddie Graham, here at the township, and I will forward the Zoom link registration information directly to you. By applying a racial equity lens to our work, we are paying disciplined attention to race and ethnicity while analyzing problems, seeking solutions, and defining successes. We hope that you will be just as excited to listen, learn, and to do the hard work that is required to address the power and the power imbalances that exist as part of systematic racism. So we hope that you will join our Town Hall on May the 19th at 7:00 PM. So without further ado, I will ask Brandon Ford, Brandon, if you could queue up the video, and thank you.
Sure, I'm gonna mute everyone real quick, and then I'll unmute myself and share the video. That way we don't have any kind of feedback. All right.
Springfield had tried to place young black boys in lower academic classes that they clearly do not belong in. This happened to my brother and many of my friends and their siblings as well.
I was in all the academically advanced groups throughout elementary school, but I was not offered the test to take enrichment courses. I know so many black students who are absolute geniuses but aren't taking the advanced classes because they were not even given the opportunity to try.
In the fifth grade for the Wax Museum, it was mainly white people on the list of people we choose, and only four black people, Jackie Robinson, MLK, Oprah, and Michelle Obama. And I wanted to do Misty Copeland, the first African-American principal ballerina for the American Ballet Theater, and was told I couldn't do her because the school didn't have the resources and wasn't willing to buy.
I was stuck in a class with kids who were further behind me developmentally.
I didn't take honors math because they had too many white.
How and what we were doing, and I wasn't getting the best experience.
They cared way more about the white kids than they did about us.
I am lucky I knew I was gifted. Even after many times trying to get me into advanced math, I split advanced after advanced with the SSJ, yet was still sitting in class. We have to tell kids that they have these opportunities.
These kids could be president.
There have been many times where I have been wrongfully disciplined due to the color of my skin or simply not heard at all.
I have never been wrongfully disciplined in my school district, but I used to watch disparities in dress coding almost every day. White girls in my school were almost never dress coded for anything. Sleeveless tops, thread-like jeans, the black girls in my homeroom and their surrounding classes were dress coded for something as simple as a headband.
My sophomore year, I had only been at my school for two months at most, and I was having a problem with a group of white male students. So my mom came up to the school to have a talk about how the problem could be solved. An ex-principal who had never even spoken to me before said, "It seems like blank is the type that's quick to anger. Is there anything that calms her down, like listening to music?" Never in my life had I been accused of having anger issues.
As a female, I've been dress coded.
They were black. I am white.
A lot of racism became blatant.
The teacher only called them out for it, and not me. We both knew why the teacher had done that.
A lot of teachers would make racist and offensive jokes, and the administration never dealt with it the correct way. I got accused of having a bait pen on me in school when it wasn't even mine. Apparently, my shoulders are not as protected. Best thing you can ask, because you're going to get kicked out of class if you don't. You can't mess up. They didn't have proof that it was mine, and they just assumed since it was in the same hallway as my locker.
I've just noticed teachers have a tendency to ease up on white students and be harsh on minorities. I do remember telling a teacher I was part-black, and he was very disrespectful every day after that.
A gym teacher snapped at me for talking in African-American vernacular, as if speech has anything to do with gym. He often made the way I talked the butt of his jokes, which always made me uncomfortable, especially as a black student coming from a predominantly black school where my speech was the norm. He snapped at me when I had asked another student, "Who balls that?" He went on this quick rant and said, "Really? That's how you talk? You expect to get a job like that? This is America where we speak English."
It felt like I was just there. Other teachers really didn't care to talk to me, but were always excited to talk to the white kids. Lately overtly racist. Once these students threw grates at black students and made fun of them, they compared students of different ethnicities to animals and made terribly racist jokes. One teacher couldn't even remember the names of her minority students and would call them a different person of colors name.
So were we waiting for me to say something else?
Bear may have signal problems because his picture dropped out and his voice dropped out.
There we go. No, I just saw something that said I was, I unmuted myself, and then somebody muted me back, and now I'm muted again. Sorry, go. Here we go.
We can hear you.
Sorry about that. Yeah, you can't see me?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That maybe your bandwidth's low and it'll just box it out.
I can see him.
Oh, then my bandwidth must be low.
Yeah.
I can see.
But I can see everybody else.
Sorry. Well, Eddie, thank you for bringing that to the board. That was
That was really good.
That was good.
Yeah. Required viewing for every human.
I think all, all kudos should go directly to our young people, as I stated, even from the background music, all the slides, the statistical stories of actually going through the school and securing those stories from the young people was all done completely by them. We just gave them the support they needed in order to bring this, these stories of disparities to the intention of the community. And as I stated, that we did this in order that we can open conversations that can help heal those, heal those students that went through this, but also to help address these in our community moving forward, so in order to make us all one family. When one part hurts, we all should hurt. So thank you very much for allowing us to even show it. And I hopefully that a lot of member people can show up for the meeting on the 19th.
Well, and to, and to that end, you know, if we can maybe amplify that through our website, through some sort of, you know, voices from the community or, you know, sort of continuation of the conversation through the website, that might make, that might make a lot of sense.
Has, Eddie, has this been shown to the school board and to the administration?
Eddie muted.
Um, yes, it has. What we did was we did show it to the, the school board and the school body. We wanted to allow them to view it first before disseminating it to the rest of the community. They had classes, a couple of meetings with our students that created it. There's been some positive response. Of course, it's still an ongoing conversation and dialogue. But now we want to bring, we feel that we're at the point where we could bring all the other members of the community into the discussion along with the school board and the school administration. I will say that Dr. Yanakum, our newly appointed school superintendent, has been very receptive to the message and has been doing a great job in helping to address the young people's concerns. She is really, she's just great. So kudos to you, Dr. Yanakum, if you see this. But we hope to continue this di, this dialogue in order to bring about more inclusion of our young people in addressing these issues.
Yeah. It's so hard to get these messages out to people, and I know in these, this day and age, you know, they can embed these videos into, you know, journals and articles, but can, hopefully, we can see this kind of thing in the Enquirer or some of the magazines, local magazines, that kind of thing.
I think it has been on Nextdoor, Erdnuth.
Is that right? Yeah.
And to be, the, this story has been shared with the Enquirer, the Philadelphia Tribune. I believe it was on Fox News and a couple of other newspapers did pick up the, the story and have interviewed our young people also, so.
That's great.
They're just doing a great job. They are really fantastic and really intelligent young people.
Yeah. Well, the way things get done, you just gotta keep plowing ahead and make people aware of this stuff, you know, not give up. Okay, well, thanks, Eddie. All right, so.
Betsy has a question.
Betsy, go ahead.
Yeah, yeah, I was just wondering who the students were, Commissioner Graham, do you know?
Yes, they are members of the NAACP Branch Youth Leadership Committee. If you come to the town, Shaw, if you can, if you can make it to the Town Hall, Betsy, they will all be present, and I'm sure a list with their names can be given to you.
Yeah, I was hoping to put something in the paper earlier than that, so.
You can reach out to me, and I can make sure that you get that. I can send that to you either later this evening or first thing in the morning.
Well, that would be great because I'm going to be working on the article tomorrow.
Okay.
Okay, thanks.
You're more than welcome.
Okay. So we'll go into the public portion of our meeting. The Board is now open to comments or questions from the Board. The Board draws particular attention to those items listed on the agenda this evening. Please be advised that once the committee reports begin, the Board can no longer accept questions from the floor. At the conclusion of the committee reports, public comment will once again be accepted. However, the official action on those issues listed on the agenda will have already taken place. Therefore, if you wish to comment on an agenda item, now would be the appropriate time. Questions or comments?
We have an email. Can I ask you a question? Do we know about the polling locations? Are they, are they finalized, or is there anything open on that?
I understand that they're finalized. That's
They are finalized.
Okay.
Yep. Yeah. That was, that was a tough sled, but we, we did it. Okay, so hearing no questions, and we'll open it again at the end of the meeting. I'll go into the committee reports, and I will kick it off. This is the report of the Community Development Committee. This concerns Resolution Number 1528, deed of dedication. I move the Board of Commissioners adopt Resolution Number 1528, a resolution accepting a deed of dedication from Axelrod MPD of Philadelphia LP for a 5,600 square foot right-of-way along a portion of Northwestern Avenue in accordance with legal descriptions prepared by Blue Marsh Associates, Inc., for lots one and two of the Axelrod subdivision 241 Northwestern Avenue, Philadelphia. As part of the subdivision land development of the two lots, Northwestern Avenue was widened between six and seven feet in front of both lots, and the additional right-of-way was, will permit additional widening to occur in the event that it is deemed necessary by the township. So that is my motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on the motion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, all opposing, say nay. Okay, please record a unanimous vote. Okay, and that does it for my report, so we will move on to Commissioner Harbison, the Chairman of Internal Affairs, and the Library Committees.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, we have the May bill listing. I move that the Board of Commissioners approve the April check reconciliation in the amount of $1,56,862.70 in the May bill listing in the amount of $658,485.21. That is my motion.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Paul, any questions or comments on the motion? Okay, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody say nay? Okay, please record a unanimous vote.
Moving on to number four on the agenda, North Hills Country Club. In 2017, Club Corp, Inc., owners of the North Hills Country Club, petitioned the Montgomery County Board of Assessment for a substantial reduction to the assessed value of the property. The Board of Commissioners of Springfield Township entered their appearance to defend against the appeal. Since that time, the township and Club Corp have exchanged various settlement offers in an effort to resolve this matter and to avoid protracted litigation. While the Board of Commissioners is interested in securing a fair real estate assessment, it is also mindful of the open space benefits the property provides to the community in its present state. Therefore, it is offered and agreed to, if offered and agreed to by the property owner, I move that the Board of Commissioners approve a settlement agreement with Club Corp, Inc., related to the real estate tax assessment appeal for the property located at 99 Station Avenue, Glen Side, PA. Terms of the settlement shall stipulate a market value assessment for the property of $4.0 million in 2017, $4.5 million in 2018, $5.0 million in 2019, and 2020, and $6 million in 2021. In addition, Club Corp shall agree to extend the current deed restriction limiting the use of the property to a membership-based golf and country club for an additional five-year period expiring in 2032. That is my motion.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Do we have any questions or comments on the motion?
I have a question and a comment, Mr. President. I had requested that this, I didn't be removed from the agenda, but obviously it wasn't for whatever reason. I think this is a, this is a, not the proper way to negotiate real estate tax settlements. I have been involved with this negotiation a little bit, but I think this, you know, this declaration of where we stand before we even have an offer from the owner is, is a mistake and a bad idea. Therefore, I'm not going to support it. That's, that's my statement.
Okay. And I guess my only comment to that would be that we have been directed by the judge to make a settlement, or it is going to go to court, and we have been advised that if it does go to court, we will not get the extension on the, you know, on the deed restriction, so that would go away, and
Respectfully, Mr. President, we, we have no idea what we're going to get in court, you know.
You're right. It's all We don't know. It's a big roll of the dice. This, this, a settlement is not a roll of the dice, and I'd rather bet on it, on, you know, something that I can, you know, take to the bank.
I think we're tarring our hands here.
I also think, I don't think disclosing it is disadvantageous at this point, given that this was already presented to them in front of the judge. So I don't know who we're hiding it from by not saying publicly. You're welcome to vote against it and go to trial and hope to come out. The problem with going to trial is, my biggest concern is they can just develop and build houses, and there's no way the judge is going to add five years to it because that's not the way assessment appeals go. So that would be a nice sweet thing if they agree to it. They haven't agreed to this.
Well, but Jeff, respectfully, we understand that they're still under their tent, their, the balance of the 10-year operation of, as a golf course, no matter where we come out with this, this case. And, and I still believe that you, you know, you can negotiate this stuff up to the time that the, the court, you know, throws open the doors and says, "Come in." And, you know, by, by agreeing to this, this term, I think it severely hampers our ability to do that. I'd also, I'd also made mention that, you know, we're only one party to the stipulation that gets settled. The school board is, is going to have to sign off on this also, and to my knowledge.
Are they a party to this? I didn't realize they were a party to this.
Well, they're, they're party to any settlement. They're going to have to sign any
Paying the legal fees, too?
I don't think so. Well, that's to be negotiated.
Okay, I didn't realize they were partying. I know they're beneficiary, but I didn't realize they were partying.
Well, they're going to have to have the stipul, they're, they're going to be
Can I ask this to the listener, is that right?
My understanding is that they're going to have to sign off on any, any settlement.
Right, yeah, they have to sign the stipulation, this, and, and, and we've got no input from them at this point in time. So to agree to this is nuts.
Pete?
Yeah.
Just to clarify, the numbers that you have agreed to here or have been put forth in the motion were the numbers that they offered. So to say that they, we have not received an offer is incorrect. The numbers are their numbers. We added a five-year deed restriction or an extension to the deed restriction to their offer. That is all you're voting on right now.
Yeah, well, yeah, I'm, I was talking about the school board.
The school board has not been interested in getting involved in this.
It doesn't, it doesn't matter. There's not going to be any settlement on this issue. Andy, you correct me if you think I'm wrong, unless the school board signs off on it, too, because, I mean, you know, we're, we're a loser, you know, in the $40,000, $50,000 range. School board can be, is a loser in the $300,000, $400,000 range. So, you know, this, this is serious money here, so.
Well, Pete, yeah, but Pete, if, if, if we vote in favor of this and the school board doesn't, then you've won your case.
Well, nothing will happen. Nothing
You're right, but
Yeah. Then it goes to trial.
Nothing will happen to the school board. Doesn't vote against, vote against, nothing will happen anyway, so.
This is not the way it should be done.
And just to reiterate kind of where we're at right now, their deed restriction expires in less than five years. Right. So to me, the most critical part of this settlement is that extension of the, of the deed restriction. More so, I think, than, than the value, renegotiated value. And really, that's the biggest piece we have to lose kind of moving forward.
And we are guaranteed to lose it. We are guaranteed to lose it because the judge doesn't have the authority to do it.
Yeah, but the party's going to do it. The party's going to agree to it up to the, up to the
Then it's a settlement, yeah.
Yeah, exactly. But you're, you're trying to make a settlement without really the authority, a settlement, a one-sided settlement here.
No, it's not one-sided.
The judge, the judge said, "I want to work this out within the month, or I'm going to send it to trial." So we met, we worked it out, we exchanged things back and forth, and this is where we are. I don't know what's one-sided about it, except you think that you can do better than, than we've done so far. It's not one-sided.
It's not, it's not what we've done.
Negotiations. This was done under judicial supervision.
Yeah, they, they haven't, the other, the other side, correct me if I'm wrong, Mike, has not agreed to the, to any extensions here. We started out, we have started out with a 15-year request. That was knocked back to a 10-year request, and now we're back, when now we're going down to a five-year request. In my opinion, these guys are not going to go for any of this extensions, and so you're, we end up arguing on, on the dollars.
Pete, if that's the case, then this motion, even if it's agreed to by the board, we start over and we go to court.
Right.
Well, you always start over when you go to court.
Right, but we're rolling the dice here as to whether it gets developed in 2027.
You're laying all your cards on the table. I mean, you know.
They already know the cards, Pete. They already know the cards. They're, they're
They're already on, they're already on the table.
Or part of the issue is, this needs to be approved at a public meeting. So obviously, there's some other sides that need, need to agree, but these would be the terms that would be agreeable. But these would be the terms that would be agreeable to the township. To the extent that the other parties involved don't agree, then there's no agreement.
Right. I agree with that.
I also think, Peter, that, I don't mean this in adversarial, if they don't agree to, they're okay with the numbers, because it's their numbers. And so the issue is the five-year extension from, when can we stick homes in? Is it twenty twenty-seven or is it twenty thirty-two? If they're adamant, they say, no, we're going to go to trial, we're going to risk it, we want out a year. That tells you what their plans are. They'd be ready for the bulldozers in six years.
Possibility.
I think this will show their hand. If they agree to the extension, then we should all exhale a little.
Yeah. They won't
And frankly, at that point, the membership should be aware of their plans, and, you know, the community should be aware of their plans, and it'll be a much more transparent process moving forward, yeah.
We're forcing the issue with this, and I sure hope they take it for that reason, not, just because if they don't, it's, it's a window into what their plans really are. There's a lot of these, White Manor is the same one. I think that's even with them, where these companies come in and they buy the clubs because the clubs are having trouble with their cash flow and have a lot of debt. They pay off the debt, they do additions, they did it here, they beautiful work to the club, and they agree for ten or fifteen years not to do anything with it. And the fear is that these guys are just kind of Wall Streeters that are just sort of waiting it out, and then, you know, one minute after their time's done, then it's like, okay, four hundred homes are going up here. In this case, I, I don't want to be scary here because the zoning is different here, but in other ones, the fear is that that's the business model. And, and that doesn't affect the vote here, but that's sort of the context of what's going on, and whether they accept this or not is going to be a little window into what I think their business model is, is it, like, we're really going to try and make this work as a golf club? Or is it like, we're just biding time till the market's the way we want it, and this, this little Trojan horse expires? So, that's what I think.
Yeah, I just, I just can't see that we can lose because, you know, either way, you know, we're going to start from ground zero. So this is our best shot, I think.
Motion's on the floor, right?
Motion's on the floor, so we have, and we have a second, so I'll, I'll I'll do the roll call. In favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say nay?
Nay.
Okay, please record a six to one vote in favor of the motion. Thank you. Okay. And that ends your report, right?
Yes, it ends my report, I'm sorry.
Okay, great, thanks. Okay, we will next move on to Commissioner Wilson, the Chairman of Cultural Environmental Resources Committee.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. I have a recycling report that during the month of April twenty twenty-one, Springfield Township residents recycled a hundred and eighty point oh seven tons of materials with a householder participation rate of eighty-two point six percent. The net cost of the township for the month was twenty-five thousand eight hundred and thirty dollars and forty-three cents. Somewhat, somewhat related, the township recently participated in a recycling composition study with six other members of Montgomery County Recycling Consortium, in which the township's recyclables were found to contain the least amount of residual of any municipality, any of the municipalities. Residue is a material that is collected with recyclables, but is treated, treated by recycling processors as trash because is unable to be recycled for a variety of reasons. The most common of which is food contamination or unacceptable material. As a result of the composition study, the township's residual rate was found to be eleven percent, well below national, the national rate of between fifteen and twenty-five percent. The aggregate residue rate for the, for the recycling consortium as a group is sixteen point two six percent. Springfield Township residents, as well as the Springfield Township Public Works Department, should be commended for their efforts. I would like to make a motion here regarding the recycling service contract documents. So I move that the Board of Commissioners authorize Springfield Township to participate in an intermunicipal contract with the Montgomery County Recycling Consortium for the preparation of a contract documents to secure transfer station management, material handling, and recyclables processing services on behalf of the consortium and its member municipalities. The proposed, the proposed contract is to be awarded to M S W Consultants LLC and was submitted in response to a request for proposal solicited by Upper Dublin Township in April of two thousand twenty-one. The total cost of the contract is thirty-seven thousand four hundred dollars, for which Springfield Township's pro rata share is five thousand four hundred and seventy-seven dollars and thirty-four cents. That is my motion.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Second? Okay, thank you. Okay, any questions or comments on the motion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, any opposed, say nay? Please record a unanimous vote.
Okay, thank you. That concludes my reports.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Wilson. All right, next we will turn to Commissioner Graham, the Chairman of Parks and Recreational Resources Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. For my report, I have three motions tonight. The first has to do with the Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission, Committee. I move that the Board of Commissioners reappoint, reappoint Adrian Smythe, Noel Powell, and David Morris to new three-year terms of service on the Springfield Township Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee. The three, the new three-year terms of service shall expire on May the twelfth, two thousand twenty-four. That is my motion.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on the motion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay? Okay, please record a unanimous vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. The next is on, the next motion is on parks classification and event permits. I move that the Board of Commissioners approve the classification of the township's park lines in accordance with criteria established by the National Recreation and Parks Association. The purpose of the classification practice is to identify for potential park users the level of services, amenities, and facilities available at each property. In addition, the classification po- policies will identify which parks are unable, which are available for athletic rental use, event rental use, and passive use. The following classifications have been recommended by the Parks and Recs Advisory Committee. For the Samonte and Windhill Parks, a mini park or a tot lot. For neighborhood parks, Bisher, Laurel Beach, Marlowe, McKelvey, and Veterans, for an act as an act, athletic field. For a community park, Cisco, which would allow athletic and other events. For natural resources, Folgety, Mermaid, and Sandy Run. And for other open and green space trails, this will be determined, to be determined. That is my motion.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Second?
I had a quick question. So with regards, with regards to the classifications, and I understand that this is mostly just to codify and formalize the park use in accordance with some, with a sort of national standards now. But let's say we wanted to have an event at Veterans Park. Could we still do that?
It would need to be brought before the board, before we would issue it internally. It's not but it would, it would trigger a public process by which that would be issued.
Okay, so it doesn't really necessarily change or preclude the use of, of, of fields moving forward. It just, this is just sort of a codification of the way they exist today. And then if we wanted to change it in the future, we could do that. We could have an event somewhere. We just have to have some sort of formal hearing for that.
Yeah.
It wouldn't be a here, a hearing necessarily, but it would be kind of like your fireworks code, right? You can't have fireworks unless we bring it to the board and you grant a waiver to that. So what we would do is, rather than grant the event permit administratively through staff, we would bring it to the attention of the board, and the board would have a public meeting where you would discuss the proposal and you would approve it.
Okay.
And I think it also addresses a few of those, like those smaller parks like Mermaid and Sandy Run, where if you just wanted to have a small birthday party for like, you know, twelve to fifteen kids, it would not necessitate the use of the person that wanted to use the, the facility by making an application for a permit, a small party like that at a, at a field that is now repurposed or defined within that small park category, they could just have that, that small birthday party for one of those small kids without applying for a permit. It allows for more uses of our parks, and it just restricts those larger uses, which will necess, will necessitate you coming before the board to getting permits and insurance for that particular event.
Thank you for that clarification. I'll second it.
Sorry.
Uh, we lose Baird again?
Yeah, can you hear me? Can you, are you there? Okay, sorry, yeah, my, my internet's a little funky tonight. Sorry about that. There we go. Anyway, do, do we have a second on that?
Jonathan.
Okay, thank you. Okay, all right. So all, and any more questions or comments? Okay. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say nay? Okay, please record a unanimous vote.
And for my final motion, it's concerning resolution number fifteen thirty-two. I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt resolution number fifteen thirty-two, a resolution authorizing a grant fundery, funding request for the two thousand twenty-one Keep Pennsylvania Beautiful Healing the Planet Grant Program. The purpose of the grant proposal is to secure funding in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars to facilitate the Mermaid Park Habitat and Stream Restoration Project. If funded, the grant award will be leveraged with two hundred and five thousand six hundred dollars in grant awards previously attained for the project. That is my motion.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Great. Any questions or comments on the motion? Okay, well, Brandon's doing a great job, you know, bringing these, these grants in, and this specific grant, I have to tell you that when they get the grant, everybody's required to wear a tie-dye T-shirt. So, all right, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed, say nay? Okay, please record a unanimous vote.
Thank you, Mr. President, and that concludes my report for tonight.
Okay, thanks. Okay, we'll now move on to Commissioner Maxwell, the Chairman of the Public Safety Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. One item this evening, it is for parking restrictions on Traymore Avenue. In response to concerns raised by property owners regarding commercial deliveries on street parking and general traffic congestion in the area of Traymore Avenue and Woolly Grove Avenue, the Traffic Safety Officer is recommending a change to the existing parking regulations on Traymore Avenue from parking prohibited to no stopping or standing. First motion, I move that the Board of Commissioners amend the Springfield Township Code, section one oh seven dash thirty-two, Schedule Nine, parking prohibited by repealing the existing parking regulations on the west side of Traymore Avenue from the northwest curb line of Woolly Grove Avenue and Traymore Avenue to a point one hundred and fifty feet northerly thereof. That is my motion.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. And any questions or comments? John, you're muted.
Sorry, I have a dog bark next to me. I'm trying to
Okay. All right, so all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say nay? Okay, please record a unanimous vote.
Next.
Hey Baird?
Yes.
Excuse me, we did have a hand raised, and I just wanted to let the, the public know that public comment.
Once we enter the committee report
Yeah, this is, yeah, well, we can
Know that they have to wait.
Yeah, wait until the end of the, end of the report, and then we can, we can, she can, she can make a comment. Okay.
Okay, next, I move that the Board of Commissioners amend the Springfield Township Code, section one oh seven dash thirty-seven, Schedule fourteen, no stopping anytime by prohibiting vehicles from stopping or standing on the west side of Traymore Ave from its intersection with Woolly Grove Avenue to a point one hundred and fifty feet northerly thereof. That is my motion.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on the motion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed, say nay? Please record a unanimous vote.
And that will conclude my report for this evening.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Maxwell. Okay, and then next we will hear from Commissioner Cobb, the Chairman of our Zoning Committee.
All right, thank you, Mr. President. And I do apologize in advance if one of the dogs wants to chime in here. But certain, things are certainly heating up at zoning right now, as we will prepare to hear four applications for the month of May at the zoning hearing board, which will meet on May twenty-fourth at seven P M, continuing through the Zoom meeting format. The new applications that we will hear will be from Lauren Barbudo, the owner of the property located forty-six Grove Avenue in Flower Town. The applicant, the applicant is requesting a dimensional variance to allow for the installation of a six-foot-high fencing on the property line that fronts on Schnell Avenue. This is a corner property with frontage on, on both Grove and, and Schnell avenues, and the property is currently zoned within the C Residential District of Ward One. The next application that will be heard is from Tara and H Brad Kerr, owners of the property located at three oh seven Woods Road in Glen Side. And the property owners have requested a dimensional variance, seeking approval to construct a detached garage to the rear of their home that is proposed to be fifteen feet, eight inches in height, instead of the fourteen-foot height limitation imposed by the zoning ordinance. The property is zoned within the A Residential District of Ward Number Seven. The next application to be heard is from Elizabeth and Edward Necio, Necio, owners of the property located at eighteen Gun, Glendale Road in Erdenheim, and this property, they're, they're requesting a dimensional variance, seeking approval to construct a shed in the rear corner of the property that's proposed to be three feet from the side property and four feet from the rear property line. The property is owned within the B Resident, B Residential District of Ward Number Four. And the final application to be heard is from Mr. Arthur Morton, owner of the property located at seventy-nine fourteen Cheltenham Avenue in Winmore. The applicant has filed for an appeal from the actions of the zoning officer who denied the request, use, and occupancy certificate to allow Mr. Morton to operate a sober living residence for up to twenty-three unrelated persons in a single-family dwelling, which currently has four bedrooms. The property is zoned B Residential. The B Residential zoning district permits single-family dwellings, but does not permit group homes. In addition, the applicant has requested that the zoning hearing board allow the use as a reasonable accommodation under the Fair Housing Act. The property is located in Ward Number Five of Springfield Township. Again, those four applications will be heard on May twenty-fourth. Again, those four applications will be heard on May twenty fourth at seven through the Zoom meeting format. And finally, I'd like to announce that in compliance with Section six oh nine of the Pennsylvania Municipalities Planning Code, the Board of Commissioners of Springfield Township at its regular public meeting on June ninth, two thousand and twenty-one, will conduct a public hearing on and may vote to enact in ordinance to consider, to consider zoning code text amendments to establish a forty-five-day deadline for the issuance of use and occupancy certificates and to extend the expiration of zoning relief in certain circumstances. The meeting on June ninth will begin at seven thirty P M and will be conducted via the Zoom virtual meeting platform. Instructions for accessing the meeting and for submitting public comment or testimony will be posted to the Springfield Township website at Springfield, SpringfieldMontco dot org at least twenty-four hours in advance. And I think that is my report in its entirety.
That's great. Okay, so that's, that is your report, none of motion, so we don't have to take a roll call for that. So I appreciate that. And we will move on to our final report from Commissioner Lee, the Chairman of Public Works and the Facilities Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight I just have one item. I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt resolution number one five three three, a resolution designating May sixteenth to the twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-one as National Public Works Week, commending the performance and contributions of the individual employees of the Springfield Township Public Works Department. Springfield Township Public Works Department is responsible for the operation and maintenance of all public facilities and infrastructure, including solid waste and recycling collection, highway maintenance, snow and ice removal, storm sewer conveyance systems, public buildings, and recreation areas, and all township-owned vehicles and equipment. That is my motion.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Okay, any questions or comments on the motion?
I can make a quick comment, and that's, you know, I don't think that we can say it enough and say it frequently enough just how commendable our Public Works Department has been over the past year. They really were on the job every day throughout the pandemic, continuing to kind of keep our township clean, streets clear, and just think that the job that they did was extraordinary and just, again, don't think we can say it enough publicly, what an amazing job that they did.
Yep, you're here. Okay.
And before you move on, Mr. President, I asked that, as I stated in Monday's meeting, I know that we have a above-board Public Works Department, but I also believe that kudos should go to our Springfield Township Library personnel. They have done a lot, a yeoman job, especially during the pandemic and dealing with making sure that our library was accessible to our young students and students, especially during a difficult time as the pandemic was. They also did a yeoman's job, so kudos to the staff also at the Springfield Township Library.
Yep, absolutely. Great job all around. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye, any opposed, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote. Thank you. Okay, so I guess that concludes our reports. So we will then go back to our, the public portion of our meeting. The board is now open to comments or questions from the public. Any questions or comments from the public? Paige Bauer, okay, please.
Hi. Resident of Traymore Avenue.
Yep.
I don't see how amending the signs will work as though people do not pay attention to the no parking. They park there to run in to get their pizzas. You know, they're, they're maybe ten, fifteen minutes so that no stopping or standing is basically what they're doing now. Is there any way to put yellow lines or somehow change instead of signs? Because the signs that people don't pay attention to anyway.
Yeah, well, we looked at, at turning Traymore into a one-way street and that would sort of foul up the, the, the traffic patterns. And we looked at a lot of different options. This was the option that, and we talked about this at length on Monday and, and we felt that this was what we should try. Now, if, if after a month or so, we find that there are some problems, we can go back to the drawing board.
Okay, and how will, I mean, how will it be in effect? Like, how will people know? You know, like, how will it be enforced?
Well.
Will anybody be around to, you know, or is it the residents going to have to be like?
Well, that, so as a combination of our police, our public works will monitor it and then you should, you know, be monitoring these things and calling us and letting us know how it works.
Okay, because myself and some of the other residents, we do, we have been taking pictures of people parking where.
Don't, don't take pictures, call the police.
Well, by the time the police get up here, they could be gone.
Well, they'll get there about, they'll be there in two minutes.
Through a bank robbery, but if there's a bank robbery, you call the police. We only have thirty police. We have, the citizens have to do their jobs. Call the police if you see something illegal.
Okay.
You can take all the pictures you want, but the first thing you should do is call the police. It's not fair to blame the police because you don't want to make a phone call. They just can't be everywhere at all times. Please call the police if you see somebody breaking the law. And if that doesn't work, we'll take another, we'll, I don't know what more we can do. Painting the lines the police can do if it's not working, but call the police.
Okay, no, what I was saying is if somebody's in there to like go to Tony's to get their pizza and I call and that person has left and, you know, the cops show up and then I don't want to waste their time. You know.
You know, they're there, they're there for you to waste their time. That's what their job is. So please, just do it. Yeah, don't worry about that.
They won't blame you. They won't even.
You're not wasting their time. That's their job. Yeah.
Do I have to do it through nine one one or can I do it through?
It has to be nine one one.
Okay. All right.
I know that sounds, it sounds kind of crazy, but it's not like there's a lot of crime going on in Springfield, you know. And we have three and four cops out at all times. So this is giving them something to do. And if something more important's going on, guess what? They're not coming. So we all have that problem. It's like, oh geez, you know, you're not a prowler on the first floor. This person's here probably going to be gone in five minutes. I don't want to bother them. But you got to get over that. I mean, I mean, that's wonderful that you feel that way. But just go ahead, call nine one one and say there's somebody in this, no, no standing. So could the police do something? And then that'll be that. And, and they won't be mad if they come and, but they'll be more likely to keep an eye on it next time. So.
Okay.
Your intentions are good, your reactions are good, but you gotta call nine one one.
I believe Mr. Taylor had something that you, that he wanted to interject on this subject.
I just wanted to add that one of the suggestions was could we put some form of street markings or something on there? And that is also a recommendation that we don't have to codify. The difference here is we're changing the parking regulations. So we needed to codify that. That's why it required an act of the Board of Commissioners. But we do intend to paint a box on the street, for lack of a better word, to designate the no stopping or standing area. And there's a distinction in the motor vehicle code for no parking and no stopping or standing. So it's a little bit easier for the police to enforce the no stopping or standing when somebody does attempt to pop in for their coffee or pop in for their pizza, whatever it may be.
Okay. Awesome. Thank you.
Okay, thanks for asking those questions. Okay, anybody else?
Hey, Mr. President, can I just go ahead. Reiterate a discussion that we had on Monday evening regarding our, our attempts or moving towards digitizing some of the information that we normally get on a monthly basis so that that can be accessed by residents in advance of particularly the workshop meetings on Mondays. And I'm encouraged by, I was encouraged by the discussions on Monday. And I believe that the board is committed to working through some logistical issues associated with kind of digitizing a lot of those materials so that we can get them out to residents. And I'm hoping that we'll, we'll continue to kind of make headways in that direction in terms of getting more of that information out, which I think is a very good step.
Yep, because I think some of this stuff that, that Ms. Bauer talked about was actually in our agenda book. It, it kind of explained some of that to a greater extent. And if that were posted, you know, she would know about this sort of thing. So. Yeah. Okay. All right, well, then I will, any other questions or?
Yeah, Baird, this is.
Okay, go ahead.
This is, my comment is to Betsy. Betsy, while we were in our meeting, I got into the young people's group chat because I know you wanted to individually identify the members of the Cheltenham area branch, NAACP Youth Leadership Committee. They're not comfortable with that. They asked if you could just identify them as the Cheltenham branch, Cheltenham Branch Area NAACP Youth Committee. They're not comfortable with having you individually named them. They want us to be, they want it to be named collectively. So, thank you. I see your, I see your thumbs up. Thank you.
Good deal. Okay, I see, I see, yeah, I see Carol has her, her hand up. Carol, go ahead.
Okay.
Right, Carol.
Um, I just want to thank the Board of Commissioners. This is Carol Lockard from Wakefield Road. I want to thank the Board of Commissioners and specifically some commissioners who individually helped all of the voting locations in Springfield Township have been okay. At one point, we were missing seven, possibly eight. And now everyone will have a place to vote. So thank you very much for everything that the board did to facilitate that.
Thank you, Carol.
Thanks, Carol.
Thank you, Carol.
Okay. All right, any other questions or comments? Going once, going twice?
Baird, I'm going to just follow up on Carol's thing.
All right, go ahead.
There's a lot of bashing of Brian Hellick, and he was very nice. He's got a bank that was sitting empty that he has and he's letting us use that as a polling place. So that was nice of him to do that. And then the others, like the Winmore Host Company stepped up. But it's rare that we're in a private place like that. And Brian sits in there.
All right. I hope he offers free putting.
No, and he's got what, three at the country club? How many, Mike? Yeah, so he's got four.
That's good.
Four of the fifteen, we have the other eight.
So, and then Winmore has two.
Did you say, did you say pudding?
Putting, putting, like a putting, like a putting green, you know, while you're waiting, waiting in line, you know.
A lot, a lot of pudding.
Putting, yeah, right.
I also want to point out before we adjourn that the solicitor has really aged since the beginning of this meeting.
You know, Andy, you're like, you're, you're looking very distinguished.
In a good way.
Yeah. All right. Okay, going once, going twice. Okay, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Okay. We're adjourned. See you next time.